I call this meeting of Savannah City Council to order. Today is Thursday, September 25th, 2025, and the time is 2:04 PM. Thank you all for joining us and all of those who are on our various media, social media platforms, to include our award-winning SGTV. Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, economically striving community for all of its citizens, and like our mayor always say, "And for us, all means all." Our mayor is out of town on today, and I will be running our city council meeting on today. Today, our invoker will be introduced by Alderwoman Alicia Millie Blakely, Alderwoman, host two.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Pastor Charles O'Berry, please approach the podium. Thank you. Pastor Charles O'Berry, Robert O'Berry Jr., a native of Savannah, Georgia, has long been a beacon of faith and devotion in his community. Raised in the vibrant city of Savannah, Pastor O'Berry journeyed toward spiritual leadership began at an early age. After graduating from Windsor Forest High School, and Pastor, we not gonna hold that against you, he embarked on a path of higher learning, driven by his passion for serving others and spreading the gospel. His dedication to his faith led him to pursue a doctorate degree from Kingdom Ambassador Global University, where he deepened his understanding of scripture and honed his skills as a communicator and leader. Alongside his academic pursuits, Pastor O'Berry found love and companionship in Carla O'Berry, with whom he shares a blessed union and the joy of raising four children. In his pursuit of spiritual enlightenment and service, Pastor O'Berry served as a shepherd of College Park Baptist Church for five impactful years. During his tenure, he demonstrated unwavering commitment to his congregation, guiding them with wisdom and compassion through life's trials and triumphs. Driven by a profound calling and a desire to further his ministry, Pastor O'Berry made the courageous decision to resign from College Park Baptist Church and establish his own ministry, the House of Freedom Worship Center. Here, he continues to lead with humility and grace, embodying the teachings of Christ in both word and deed. Pastor O'Berry's ministry is not confined to the pulpit; rather, it extends into every facet of his life. He lives the word he preaches, serving as a living testament to the transformative power of faith. With a heart devoted to God's will, Pastor O'Berry is recognized as a man of God's own heart, anointed, appointed, and approved by the divine to spread his message of love and redemption. Through his unwavering faith and dedication to serving others, Pastor Charles Robert O'Berry Jr. has touched the lives of countless individuals, inspiring them to walk boldly in the light of God's grace. His legacy of love, compassion, and spiritual leadership continues to shine brightly, illuminating the path for all who seek truth and salvation. I present to some and introduce to others this phenomenal man of God, Pastor Charles Robert O'Berry. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I thank everyone in your respectful places for having me today. Before I go into the prayer, I want to read the scripture that God put on my heart while we here in front of our city. It comes from Genesis, Chapter 11, verse 5 and verse 6. It says, "But the Lord came down to look at the city and the tower the people were building." He said, "Look," he said, "the people are united, and they all speak the same language. After this, nothing they set out to do will be impossible for them." I truly believe, Savannah, that if we come together, all things are possible. Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come on this afternoon, Lord God, not for form or fashion. God, it's not about us, but it's all about you. Kind of Father, we come telling you thank you, Lord God, because we truly believe that it had not been for you on outside, where would we be? God, we look back over our life, and we look back down through the years and realize, God, it was nobody but you that brought us this far. Kind of Father, we know that you ain't bring us this far to leave us. Kind of Father, we pray now for peace, and we pray, God, for joy, we pray, God, for love, but most of all, we pray, God, for unity. Unity, Lord God, bringing us together will answer a lot of prayers. I truly believe unity will stop the gun violence in our city. Unity, Lord God, will help the homeless community. Unity, Lord God, will help us realize that if God be for us, who in the world can be against us? God, I ask you to have your way in this meeting. Ask you, God, to touch every agenda. Ask you, God, to touch every, every question being raised. Ask God to touch every organization, our school board, our, our police department, our fire department, Lord God, our culinary department, our SCAD school, everything that make up Savannah, Georgia. Ask you to touch it now. Let a fresh wind fall in this place, because most of all, God, we need you now like more than ever. And I realize, God, can't nobody do what's like you. It's not about denomination, it's not about skin color, it's not about where we come from, but God is all about where we're going. And I believe, God, eyes haven't seen, ears haven't heard, nor haven't entered to the heart of man, what you have in store for us, your people. So, God, we ask you to do what only you can do. Bless us like never before. God, turn every no into yes. Turn every denial into, into an awesome thing that you have for us. Let us know, God, that you are in control. Let us know that you haven't left us yet. Let us know, God, we can do this, and we will do this, because together, we sure enough can. Bless us now in Jesus's name. Amen.
Let us now honor our country by pledging the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor O'Brien, thank you so much for being here with us on today.
Madam Mayor Protem.
That's Pastor O'Berry.
Pastor O'Berry.
O'Berry, yes, ma'am.
What did I say?
You said O'Brien.
Okay. Pastor O'Berry, alright.
That's how they spell it at Windsor Forest.
Madam Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir, Alderman Palumbo.
I move for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for September 25th, 2025.
It has, it has been properly moved and seconded for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for September 25th, 2025. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor Protem, I move for the approval of the minutes for the work session, executive session, held on September 11th, 2025, at 12:00 PM, as well as the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on September 11th, 2025, at 2:00 PM.
Second.
Second motion. It has been properly moved and seconded for the approval of the minutes for the work session and executive session held on September 11th, 2025, at 12 o'clock PM, and for the approval of the regular minutes, regular meeting held on 11, September 11th, 2025, at 2:00 PM. All in favor by indicating aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I have a question, Mr. Clerk. Do we need to do any type of approval for the executive session? Okay, thank you. Let's continue on with our agenda for our presentations. Now for the appearance and recognition by the City of Savannah Human Resources Team of Human Resources Professional Day.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Council. Great to be with you today. We're here to celebrate HR professionals, and I'm gonna hand it over to our A number one HR professional and his team, our HR Senior Director, Jeff Grant.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager, our leadership, as well as the community of Savannah. It is an honor to be here this morning, this afternoon, actually, with my team, with our team, our Human Resources team, and this morning, just wanted to share a little bit about this team that's behind you, because there's so much. You know, what was just shared a moment ago was about our vision, which the City of Savannah is supposed to be a safe, environmentally healthy, economically thriving community for all citizens. And a lot of times, my team's in the background of that, and a lot of times, their work is overlooked, not on purpose, because sometimes, it's just that way. And why is it overlooked? It's overlooked because our focus is on decisions. That's the business that we are in. You know, a lot of times, we make decisions, but majority of our work is in shaping them. Majority of our work is enhancing organizational decisions that depend on and impact people every single day for this organization. And why is this important? It's important because decisions drive organizational success. It drives us to be the best organization that we can be, and those decisions are very important. And for this reason, that is our mission. That's what we do every single day. And a lot of times, those decisions are not seen by everybody, but when you see one of my team members smiling, that means a good decision's being made about our people, about their lives, about the work that they do every single day. So each year, we recognize what we call the HR Professional Day, celebrated annual on September 26th, which is an honor to recognize the critical work of Human Resources Professionals, highlighting their essential role in managing employee relations, attracting and retaining talent, shaping organizational culture, ensuring compliance and supporting organizational success, as I noted. Today, the City of Savannah, each year, but more specifically today, honors the Office of Human Resources Professionals, high-performing professionals who ensure that we are a high-performing government, for the important work we do to support city employees. Our professionals help employees adapt to an ever-changing and competitive environment while responding to workplace needs and economic challenges. We know that, we just passed GPS, right? And that's the work that's ahead of us. These professionals enable us to have positive organizational development, serve as strategic partners, meet public service goals by recruiting and retaining qualified, diverse candidates for employment, recognizing our standing employee achievements, projecting trends in the market, and providing workplace planning, developing equitable compensation. We did a study this year for all of Team Savannah. We facilitate change management and preserving the integrity of the organization by ensuring compliance with state and federal laws. Furthermore, City of Savannah Human Resources Professionals, and I love this part, we serve as leaders, we're business strategists, we're valuable advisors, we're advocates, curators, while most importantly, displaying integrity, dedication, and our foundation is trust. Our professionals live this mission that I mentioned earlier, and I'm gonna say it one more time, which is dedicated to enhancing organizational decisions that depend on and impact people by listening, engaging, attracting, developing, and supporting one public service at a time. And just to name a few things that our team has even focused on this year, they passed and worked on and facilitated a comprehensive compensation study where we took our minimum wage from $15 to $18. We took public safety, new minimum wage from 53,000, firefighters, sorry, from 53,000 to 58,000. We took our public safety officers from 55 to $60,000 a year, and 100% of our Team Savannah was engaged during that process. Many of you all know about the implementation of the internship program. Over the next five years, we'll have over 100 interns that come through Team Savannah. This is the team that, that made that happen, that shaped this decision. We also let in the efforts of the Rise Regional Job Fair. Had over 1,000 employees at International Paper who are gonna be laid off or lose their jobs, and we went to that fair. We stood out to over 2,000.
Put your hands together for that.
Over 2,000 job seekers were there. 300 International, International Paper employees came to that job fair. Team Savannah had about over, had nearly 500 people sign into their table. Of those folks, 104 of them were International Paper employees. We did about 48, 48 interviews onsite that day, and we offered 28 jobs to job seekers that day. Six of those were International Paper employees, and we continue to do follow-ups with them to work with Team Savannah. Other accomplishments of this team, they've hired over 300 individuals this year. They've done over 1,500 individuals in the last four years. They've done over 6,000 training hours this year, over 42,000 training hours in the last four years. They've done about over 6,000 personnel actions. You're probably thinking, what is that? Well, you get a paycheck every time. This is the team that puts in that data, right? In the last four years, they've done 26,000 actions that went into the system. And then this year, we've done nearly 300 onsite employee health screenings. A lot of employees can't get out to the doctor, but we do that onsite. We do that for Team Savannah members, and this is the team right here that makes it happen in the background. A lot of times, you may not see it. If you guys can give a hand for the ultimate professionals, the HR professionals, this is their day, but every day is HR Professional Day. And keep giving a hand. Yes, yes. If everybody can introduce yourselves from, I'm gonna go from the left to the right. Lamisha, if you want to come up here and say what your title is.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lamisha Estelle. I am a Human Resources Business Partner. I support government operations.
Yeah.
My name's Brittany Norman, Learning and Development Manager here at the City of Savannah, and I support the training and development for professionals here at City of Savannah.
Yeah, Brittany.
Greetings, everyone. I'm Tanisha Perry. I'm an HR Business Partner, and I support community services and management services.
Good afternoon, Svetlana Sterejova, Talent Manager in the City of Savannah.
Hello, I'm Valia McIntosh, and I am the Human Resources Technician for the Compensation and Data Team.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Andrea Allen. I'm the Learning and Development Coordinator.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Height, and I'm a Project Manager for the Office of Human Resources.
Yeah, Catherine.
Good afternoon. I'm Lakeisha Boys. I am a HR Business Partner. I support fire, water resources, and planet and economic development.
Good afternoon. My name is Tammy Heinz. I am the HR Technician for the new area of Government Operations.
Come on, Tammy.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Kadetra Ortiz. I am the Recruitment Coordinator for the great city of Savannah.
Yeah, Kadetra.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christina Chandler, and I'm the Learning and Development Coordinator.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Stephanie Levert. I am a native Savanian, and I'm an HR Technician, supporting the management operations.
Come on through, Stephanie.
Hello, everyone. Alisa Canavaro, HR Technician.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am the first voice you hear. Good morning, and thank you for calling the City of Savannah. I'm Brenda Holmes, and I am the HR Assistant.
Come on, Brenda.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm Lynette Major. I'm the Senior Administrative Assistant, and I support the whole office.
Come on now.
Well, thank you to all of our wonderful HR team members. They really shape Team Savannah, and they, as Jeff said, are helping us make better decisions by helping make sure we have informed and engaged and learning professionals who make better decisions. So they're really the big part about steering our ship towards our vision of Savannah GPS. Thank you all for everything that you've done, and we, one day is not enough to recognize you. So good work. Keep serving hard.
City Manager, I just want to tell you, thank you so much for your awesome and ultimate leadership. And Jeff, Mr. Grant, thank you so much for just staying with your hands on the plow for this whole entire city of Savannah when it comes to human resources. And Team, thank you all so much for the awesome work that you all do every day. I have this saying, and I like to, to recognize and just go to the back of the rooms where folks who seldomly you see them, but the ones who do the work, and I'm hearing and seeing that this is this group here in the City of Savannah. Thank you all so, so, so much. Council members, Alderwoman Linda Wildbride. I just want to give shots out to Ms. Barbara. Yes. Thank you. Ms. Barbara is a beast. Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Anyone else? Alright. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Human Resources. Yeah, she took ass. Jeff Grant, we didn't forget about you too, sir. Now, we gonna go into our section of our agenda for alcohol license hearings. I need a motion to open up the hearing. Oh, I just declare that the license hearing is open. Alright, item number five. I am going to read each item, and then we will, if there's any discussions on it, we will do that, and then have the motions. Item number five, approval of Class C, Class C liquor beer wine by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales to Jacob Greer for Garden Square, a restaurant located at 2400 Bull Street, Suite C. The establishment is located between East 40th and East 41st Street in Aldamatic District Two. Item number six, approval of Class C liquor beer wine by the Drink Alcohol License to Kayla Black for Savannah Pirates and Treasure Museum, a museum located at 219 West Julian Street. The establishment is located between West Congress and West Bryant Streets in Aldamatic District Two. Item number seven, approval of a Class C liquor beer wine by the Drink Alcohol License for Sunday sales to Christopher Clark for Honky Tonk South, a restaurant located at 311 West Congress Street. The establishment is located between Montgomery and Jefferson Streets in Aldamatic District Two. And our last item, number eight, approval of a Class C beer by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales to Marco Sierra for Catara Los Campus, a restaurant at 1101 East Montgomery Crossroads, Unit Five. This establishment located between Waters and Golar Avenue in Aldamatic District Four. You've heard the items for the hearing. Are there any discussions?
Madam Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I move to close the hearing.
Second motion. It's been properly moved and seconded that the alcohol license hearings be closed. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Leggett.
Yes, ma'am. I ask that we accept the Class C liquor beer wine by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales to Jacob Greer for Garden Square.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, as the item has been read. All in favor of said motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Alderman Leggett, item number six.
Yes, ma'am. I ask that we accept past the Class C liquor beer wine by the Drink Alcohol License to Kayla Black for Savannah Pirate and Treasure Museum.
Second. It has been properly moved and seconded, as item six is written in our agenda. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, ma'am. I ask that we accept Class C liquor beer wine by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales to Christopher Clark for Honky Tonk South, District Two.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded for item number seven, as it's been written in our agenda. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Palumbo.
Yes, I move for the approval of a Class C beer by the Drink Alcohol License with Sunday sales for Marco H. Sierra for Taqueria Los Campus.
Second. It has been properly moved and seconded that item number eight move, as it's written in our agenda. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're moving on to our zoning hearings. Our first hearing is for... Mr. Clerk, I should open up the hearing now? I would need a motion to open up the hearing for, the zoning hearings today.
Madam Protem?
Yes.
I move that we open up the zoning hearings.
Thank you so much. It's been properly moved and seconded that our zoning hearings be open. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Dr. Shabazz, other members of City Council. This is Edward Morrow, Director of Development Services and current planning at the MPC. It's a pleasure to see you all this afternoon. I'm gonna speak to you briefly about a few zoning hearings. The first is a request to amend the text of our zoning ordinance as it relates to the ILR, or Light Industrial Restricted Zoning District. There are 41 unique parcels that we identified that are affected by this text amendment, and the ILR zoning district is a district that specifically targets industrial properties that were developed before 1960. They are typically located adjacent to or within residential areas. So these are industrial properties that were developed, and they are no longer optimal with regard to what industrial users need. So they're kind of lingering, but they still have usefulness in terms of their local economic impact. And so the zoning district accommodates them. There was a recent request that came to the MPC for a variance, and the outcome of that prompted some concern from the neighborhood about ensuring that we properly regulate vehicle and freight terminal uses, and vehicle towing and impound facilities in particular. And so those are the primary focuses of this text amendment today. There are a couple of other minor amendments to other sections that are related largely to site plan reviews to ensure that when uses come within these particular districts, again, being that they are close to residences, we want to make sure that they are properly screened. We want to make sure that outdoor storage, display, and sales areas are configured so that they are appropriate with regard to how they're viewed from streets, with regard to how neighbors that have to live near them, to make sure that they are properly screened from vision of those who have to deal with them every day. And so there are several sections that are also impacted very lightly, again, largely for the purpose of clarification, to ensure that standards are applied appropriately as these sites go through site development permitting. But the main focus is to identify these two particular uses as requiring a special use permit granted from this board once they come in for use within, or establishment within these zoning districts, and that's the vehicle towing and impound facility and vehicle and freight terminals. You can see that those would be indicated by that S that would be reflected on the principal use table. Along with those, there are some specific standards that would go with these uses, and it would be these particular uses in addition to those already required for site development permitting that this board would consider for the appropriateness of establishing one of these uses. There would be limitations on the hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., unless a larger buffer applies. A Type B buffer yard would be installed, again, just to make sure that these are properly screened from adjoining residences. There's a limitation on the height of pole-mounted lighting. To make sure that we do not have trucks that are kind of queuing in the street, we want to make sure that there's adequate queuing area before these trucks are we want to make sure that there's adequate queuing area before these trucks are able to enter the site and deliver their loads and depart. And so, there's a queuing, a minimum queuing distance that would be required. Requirement of a traffic impact analysis for sites greater than two and a half acres, the non-variability of the paving requirement within Section 9.3.5, and also outdoor storage areas requiring the standards be applied as they relate to 9.7 for principal use outdoor storage areas. So, again, all of this aimed at making sure that we are adequately protecting our residents who live near these sites as they come in for establishment. And so, with that, MPC did recommend approval of this request, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any comments from our city council? If not, I would obtain a closing of... Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Morrow, could you go back to the previous slide? Number C, pole mounted lighting shall be limited to 25 feet in height. Is it because it's already higher, or is it lower than 25 feet?
So, there are generalized site standards, but specifically because this is a zoning district that happens to occur very close to residences, we want to make sure that other users that are nearby that might not necessarily want that light pollution to be impacted by super tall lights. And so, this only impacts, again, it's a very limited scope of industrial uses, and the ones in regular industrial can be taller, you know? So, there's not an issue with, if you're in a resident, sorry, an industrial area like a park, you know, a proper area that is for industrial uses, this won't impact you. This is only for those legacy, older industrial users that happen to be near residences.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This particular petitioner is our president of Liberty City Improvement Association, and she and I, she along with Ms. Anna Walker, who is here in our chamber today, brought this situation. First of all, Ms. Anna Walker, because she lives around this area, and the area of concern that kind of sparked this text amendment. And she and our president got together, and they started working, and they've been working on this now for about a year, about a year or so. And so, I want to thank them for moving with me along with this text amendment. And at this time, I'm going to open it up. I have a card from our president, Ms. Glenda Jones. If you can come on up to the podium, if you'd like.
Good afternoon, all. My name is Glenda Jones. I am the president of the Liberty City Richfield Southover Community Improvement Association, Incorporated. Along with myself, I want to recognize that we do have some of our Liberty City Association members here, two of which are impacted by ILR districts. I want to thank the city manager, as well as Bridget Liddy and her staff, for helping us with this particular text amendment. And this amendment, it will enable the residents residing in those type of districts to have a voice in what businesses come to that, those areas, and what those businesses are going to do in those areas. This is all about quality of life for the residents that live in IL-R zoning areas. And as I said, it gives them a voice. So, we would like for you to approve this. We're thinking, and it's not just for Liberty City. Staley Avenue is the corridor in District Five that is concerned with ILR zoning, but there are other zoning areas around the city, and it not only impacts us, it impacts other residents that live in those areas. And we want to see more balance between the residents as well as the businesses. And as I said before, we want the residents to have a voice as to what is going to live next to them. And any questions?
Alderman Bell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
Not a question, but a comment. I'd like to commend you, Ms. Jones, in your...
I can't hear.
It's not a question. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not a question, but a comment. I'd like to commend you and the members of your neighborhood association for taking this progressive move, this positive move to improve the quality of life as it relates to which businesses and vehicles and terminals and all these kind of things can actually not just move through your neighborhood, but also take a residency there. So, this is a nice example for other neighborhoods and other neighborhood associations. When you have, see something wrong like that that affects your quality of life, there are proper ways to change it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And in actuality, this was inspired by the fact that sometime last year, we had a business that wanted to change how they did things in our neighborhood, and we went to the MPC. And we were 40 strong in the MPC to against that particular variance, and it was denied from the MPC. And this all transpired from that particular experience with us.
Good job.
Okay.
I would like the people who came with you, our residents, my constituents, if they would please stand just for a second so we can see you all. Thank you all so much for your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Glenda Jones, legacy.
At this time, we would entertain a motion for the corresponding item, item 12.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I move to close the hearing. Second a motion.
The, it's been properly moved and seconded that the hearing be closed for item number nine and 12. All in favor by indicating saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Motion pass.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, for the corresponding item number 12, I move that the first reading be considered to the second, and the ordinance placed upon its passage and passed.
Second. It has been properly moved and seconded that the first reading be considered the second, and ordinance placed upon its passage and passed. All in favor by indicating aye?
Aye.
All opposes? Motion passes. Item number 10. 10 and 11.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Edward Morrow again. This item is also associated with item number 13 on your agenda, a request for annexation. The two petitions that I'm going to speak to you about right now, items 10 and 14, and 11 and 15, are a future land use map amendment and a request for a zoning map amendment for the parcels at 5 West Gateway Boulevard and 0 Fort Argyle Road. This is a tract that is at the intersection of State Route 204 and I-95, so a very large regional gateway. This is a large tract that is currently zoned for community business uses in the county. And again, that is requested to be annexed into the city for provision of water and sewer services and development of the parcel consistent with the city's community business designation. You can see on the future land use map, this is presently indicated as planned development, and again, there is a PBC zoning designation. In the county, the planned district is one that accompanies most tracks that are affronting a certain class of thoroughfare. Collectors and arterials typically are required to have some sort of general development plan simply because of the significance of the location. And so, with regard to viewing future land use on the parcel, we did note that there were environmental concerns, and so, this went through a DRI. We also received public comments from a number of impacted organizations and jurisdictions, and you can see that this is noted on the regional area of areas requiring special attention map. Also, you can see that there are flood zones and wetlands indicated that are traversing the property. You can see that there is also some traffic concern here. Obviously, we are dealing with a level of service that is less than ideal, but of course, we have other policies that are at play to bring our roads up to an acceptable level of service. In looking at the future land use map, this is an area that is currently configured for principally big box retail and regional and larger commercial serving uses, restaurants, Walmart stores of that nature. And so, the county's current zoning designation is consistent with this. The purpose of the district shall be to provide community shopping facilities consisting of a wide variety of sales and service facilities serving a population from about 35,000 to 70,000. That's from the county zoning ordinance, and so, the requested zoning district, as this is also a zoning map amendment, is for BC in the city of Savannah's Nuso. And this is the description that is listed in Nuso. BC is a district established to accommodate a range of non-residential uses that serve a community-wide market, and they also permit upper-story residences. So, this would most likely be a big box retail hotel-type development, but it is also possible in this zoning district to do upper-story residences with ground floor non-residential uses like commercial. You can see some of these uses that are permitted in this district on your screen. This is not exhaustive. It is significant to note that there's some development and permitting history on this site. There was a land disturbance permit that was issued by Chatham County Engineering back in March of 2022. In January of 2023, there were some issues that were noted, and a stop work order was issued for the site because there were impacts. It's our understanding by a subcontractor, of the general contractor on the property, that impacted some environmentally sensitive areas averse to the terms of that permit. And so, that is something that we thought should be brought to your attention today. There was a mitigation plan that was requested and prepared by Coleman, and it's our understanding, based on evidence from the MPC hearing, that many of these concerns have been addressed. Nonetheless, they do appear as conditions to the rezoning. This is the concept that was provided by the petitioner. It is somewhat evident that there's not a clear plan, but what we do understand that this is a hotel developer, and the H's that you see on three of those parcels are sites that were identified for potential hotel development here. So, we know that the property owner is interested in establishing a number of hotels, and there are other general commercial pods that have been identified. Nonetheless, all of these uses are consistent with the current and the requested zoning district on this parcel. And again, these numbers went through the DRI so that adjoining impacted parties were notified of a potential impact. And so, with that, the planning commission did recommend approval of this request with two conditions that have many subparts. The first being that the petitioner would submit a general development plan so that we can understand how it is that they are going to preserve wetlands and buffer. Also, the, identify the upland and developable acres, open space to be preserved, identify stormwater management features, and also circulation and access points. Those are our principal concerns as this moves forward for development. The second condition with all of those subconditions is, that's largely related to the stop work order. And again, the applicant's engineers here, they can go through and talk about the current status of these, but as a protective measure to ensure that all of the concerns that were placed by Chatham County Department of Engineering, the planning commission did apply those as conditions of its recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I declare the hearing open for agenda items number 12, 11, excuse me, 10, 11, with corresponding items 13, 14, and 15. Are there any members from the public here to speak?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I move to close the hearing. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the hearing be closed. All in favor by indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number, item number 13. Alderman Palumbo.
Yes, for items number 13, 14, and 15, these items are on first reading. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, would you like me to read them in the record or proceed?
You can read them in the record for first reading. Yes, sir.
For first reading, item number 13, petitioner annex 66.05 acres located at 5 West Gateway Boulevard and 0 Fort Argyle Road from Chatham County to the city of Savannah. Item number 14, petition of Wesley Green on behalf of Blue Heron Development, Incorporated, to amend the future land use map amendment from planned development to commercial regional for 0 Fort Argyle Road. And item number 15, petition of Wesley Green on behalf of Blue Heron Development, Incorporated, to amend the zoning map from PBC, Plan Business County, to BC, Community Business City, with conditions to support the annexation of 66.05 acres at 5 West Gateway Boulevard and 0 Fort Argyle Road.
Thank you so much, Alderman Palumbo. For the public's sake, these items are under first reading, so we will not be carrying a motion on these items. Let us continue. Thank you so much, Mr. Morrow, for all of your help. We're going to move on to our purchasing items, items number 16 through 19. 16 through 19?
18, please.
Are there any pullouts?
18, please.
18, someone say?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there's still just, you can see the number, there's still only four, right?
One, two, three.
Yes, ma'am. There are four purchasing items, one for 66 police vehicles, another for execute contracts for our emergency storm debris removal, a third for our annual contract for street maintenance and repair services, and the fourth for a contract modification to expand the geographical boundaries of our economic and land use study.
All right. Thank you, thank you, city manager. If there are no more pullouts besides 18.
Pulling out 19, please.
And 19, 18 and 19.
No, no, only 19.
Only, okay, we pulling out 18 and 19.
Pulling out 18, 19?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I move for the approval of items number 16 and 17. Item number 16, to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for 66 police vehicles in the amount not to exceed $3,821,589 from Santee Automotive LLC. And item number 17, authorize the city manager to execute a contract for storm debris removal from Crowder Environmental Services Primary, Series Environmental Services Secondary, and DRC Emergency Services Tertiary in the amount that will vary based on the severity of the natural disaster.
It's been properly moved and seconded that items number 16, 17 be approved. All in favor by indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes on 16 and 17. Number 18.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem.
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Manager and Ms. Assistant City Manager, the, I just needed some, just the public to understand what this item was, because we always get a question of when we're going to have our streets repaired, or when will somebody address these potholes or some issues that we're having. And I'm just happy to see that we are spending some money to have some contractors to come in and start addressing our repair issues.
Yes, sir. This is an important one. We have several vendors and contracts that help us keep our sidewalks and streets in good repair and to resurface those and to pair those as needed. This one used to be called our, I believe, our tree root damage repair contract. We didn't get a whole lot of competition in the past because of that name. We redid the bid, renamed the procurement to better describe the work that we were doing. We got more competitive bids for this round, and I think we're able to put together a contract package that'll help us get this work done a little more effectively and efficiently.
Will the, will the contractors be working with our arborist in certain areas, being that we probably have to cut on some roots in certain areas where we're repairing sidewalk?
Yes, sir. Our street maintenance division, as well as our park and tree department and their arborist work closely when we repair right away that impact our tree canopy.
What about in our areas where we have historic bricks and some of those?
Absolutely.
Different areas?
Yes, sir.
So, we'll be working with city staff to make sure that we just don't damage anything or harm something happening there for centuries upon centuries.
That's right. And in some cases, we use different materials so that we can protect the root structures as well.
Okay. Madam Pro Tem, I ask that we accept... Madam Protem, I ask that we accept the item as written?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for item number eighteen, as it is written, all in favor by indicating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nineteen, Alderman Lanier.
Thank you, Madam Protem. Mr. City Manager, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of this issue. We're expanding the scope of this contract, and this is the one that they have with the Civic Center. But I was reading through, is this the only project that this contract refers to? So just help me to understand this a little bit.
Yes, ma'am, of course. And you may recall a conversation that was had with council about understanding the economic land value and the potentials there for other city-owned parcels of land to include Tricentennial Park, land that's owned in and around the Canal District, as well as land that is owned or could be owned in the southside Gateway area of the city.
So this contract, they are already contracted to work with the Civic Center, and we're expanding that for them to work?
Yes, ma'am. We procured this, council approved, gave me the authorization to enter into a contract with this firm several months ago as part of our Civic Center redevelopment work. We've really liked the product that this team has given, and it's given us some insights that we could use this work on other parcels that we have to understand better what our opportunities could be.
Okay, so when they finish looking at these other areas, they will provide us a report on probabilities or?
Yes, ma'am.
This?
Leggett.
Thank you, Madam Protem. Mr. City Manager, could you just put some clarity to some of the conversation? I'm not sure if it's germane to what we're talking about. The Civic Center has ice hockey, but we're getting ready to go into our phase of demolition. Could you speak to that at all, as I had a bunch of questions came in today?
Yes, sir. So, as you know, and as council knows, for the last few years, we have been able and happy to enter into an agreement with our partners at the Ghost Pirates to provide the Ghost Pirates one with practice ice so that they could practice, but they could also manage public skating and youth hockey activities on the ice at the current M.L.K. arena. Their lease expired, I believe, in May of 2025. We've been in conversations with the Ghost Pirates and with the Oakview Group about our plans to progress along council's Civic Center redevelopment, and we've also done a determination of risk at the current M.L.K. arena site, and have just concluded that even though we might not start activity there for another few months, it's not safe for any public skating activities, and therefore, we determined that we would not be entering into any new agreements with them at that space at this time. It is worth noting that, I think we all, for those of us who were present at the Chatham Municipal Association meeting on Tuesday night, saw the progress of the Port Wentworth project and their collaboration in P3 with the Ghost Pirates for their new practice ice facility and the new outdoor amphitheater that's being built there in Port Wentworth to replace this activity that's happening currently at the old Civic Center.
Is it safe to say that the measures that we've taken now is for the safety of any individuals that go into that site now moving forward?
Yes, sir. That is absolutely our reasoning behind it.
So is it possible for us, I guess, to make a statement as a city to the general public? We really don't have a leisure service program that will facilitate ice hockey or anything, but if we have any partners that would like to have a facility that allow that, I mean, that's something, because I know there's a little league team, a hockey team that's asking for space as well as some adults, and now we have to look at what we're going to do for our winter skating events.
Yes, sir, understood. I think the future of, you know, public skating is going to really be at the Port Wentworth facility, and it's a partnership with the Ghost Pirates. We are also working with those same partners to hopefully open up some public skating activities at our in-market arena, which has NHL-sized ice as well. So those talks are ongoing, and we hope to see that happen at the in-market arena soon.
I can only hope, because traffic going west, you'd never get the ice and milk before you get to Port Wentworth.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I have another question, please. Absolutely.
Mr. City Manager and Ms. Bates, this question is for you. In our summary reports, it says that we are authorizing you to not exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project, but in the summary report, in section three, it says expand economic access opportunity. The firm is already conducting a study of this area. The contract will not exceed three hundred thousand dollars. And so, one question, these open-end sliding contracts, for want of a better word, this is where our money, so this money I know is coming from Capital Project, but when we say it's not going to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then in the body of the work, it says it's going to be leveraged, and this contract will not exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Can you explain that to us?
Yes, ma'am, that's a great question. This is an amendment to a prior contract that council approved. The original value of that contract was a value amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand. What this is asking council to do is approve my authority on this contract to add an additional a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that limit for a total of three hundred thousand dollars.
And so we're not going to come back any future day and say that because of contract, whatever, the climate, the material, we're going to stand on three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, and remember also this was a specific discussion that we had to expand the scope of this contract, so it's not that the original scope has run over, but that we're actually expanding the scope to do more work, so.
I wasn't suggesting that. I wanted to be clear about that, because when you read that, it says that, people may not know, the prior instances and experience and documentation that we have for that.
Understood, and it is, I have no reason to believe that we will need to extend this contract for this current scope.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, Mr. Manager, how would this contract be different from the other one that's coming on at the end of the month? I noticed that we're talking about public engagement, planning, and those things. I thought we were supposed to do that with.
So there's some public engagement that happens with an economic land use study to engage potential stakeholders, industry groups on local, statewide, national, to understand what economics or investment, or real estate investment, would be possible on parcels, what's the economic land value, what's the economic land feasibility in terms of, you know, what could potentially be developed or redeveloped? So that's really the engagement piece, and I know that all of you were invited to engage with the same group as they are working through the Civic Center site. The same would be true with this expanded scope for the economic land use study. We are doing a public engagement for, to re-up, as we've discussed with council, the Canal District Plan and to refresh that and update that, as that was never adopted by city council. And we want to get it to a state where city council can consider that and adopt it, because we need a plan in that area. We also want to solidify our plans for the Waterworks Building, which, as you know, is underway. So the public engagement around the Canal District and the Waterworks Building that is specific to, you know, a lot of great weight to neighborhoods in and around those districts, but also, as council discussed, citywide engagement, too, will be happening through another firm with a completely different expertise area in public engagement. This contract is an economic land use study, so these are, this is professionals helping us understand what the economic land value and what the economic land opportunity is for some city-owned land.
So, Mr. Mayor, along those lines, so we have these two companies looking at this area, and one is looking at the economic possibilities, and the other looking at community development, and they make recommendations to us, and we make certain decisions.
Yes, ma'am.
So at the end of the day, we make the decisions, even if the two reports come in and they're conflict?
Yes, ma'am, you do.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor Protem, I move to authorize the city manager to execute contract modification number one to expand geographic boundaries of the economic land use study for the Civic Center with Robert Charles Lesser Company in the amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second motion. Item number nineteen, as it is written, has been properly moved and seconded, all in favor by indicating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move now to our resolutions. Item number twenty.
Madam Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I move for the approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority documents related to a hundred and forty-six million in state Georgia funding package for the city's Phase One improvements to the Savannah industrial and domestic water treatment plant.
And we're going to go ahead and just add in twenty-one?
And twenty-one, approval for the amendment of the resolution authorizing the city manager to submit the F.Y. 2024 and F.Y. 2025 continuum of care application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you so much, Alderman Palumbo. You have heard items number twenty and twenty-one, as it is written in our agenda. It has been properly moved and seconded? Thank you. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Mayor Protem?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't oppose, but I would like the city manager to speak to item twenty, and it's one hundred and forty-six million dollars, and how much of it will be paid back by the city and what is going to be, I will be used for upcoming.
Yes.
I.N.D. water problems.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for this.
Alderman Bell, I'm so glad that you.
You're welcome.
Kind of paused this one, because the public needs to hear about this awesome work from our, the leadership of our city manager and Team Savannah. So yes, sir, Mr. City Manager, explain it to us.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity. This is a really, really big deal. This is a hundred and forty-six million dollar funding package from the state of Georgia. It was funded in the state's budget that was passed by the Assembly and signed by the governor earlier this year. It includes seventy-three million dollars of state-directed spending, meaning dollars to the city of Savannah that are ours to invest in our water treatment facility, at the industrial and domestic water treatment facility, and then seventy-three million dollars worth of zero-interest, highly favorable loans from the Georgia Environmental Finance Agency to continue that work, which is Phase One of the I.N.D. expansion and modernization that we have presented to council and talked a great deal about with the public. Before I really commend the staff members who led the way in getting this, I want to thank council, as I did when we won this award, because we know that the state was watching this council as we discussed our investments and the things that we needed to do in terms of water treatment, and that discussion, I've heard gave the state a tremendous amount of confidence in investing in the partnership that we have with them, with Effingham County, with Bryan County. But these monies ultimately mean that our rate payers for water and sewer, all of our water and sewer customers, will pay less to make these investments because the state has invested in us. And with that, I really want to thank our chief of water resources, Ron Feldner. I want to thank Brian Shaw, who's our director at the I.N.D. plant. I want to thank Sean Rosenquist, who's our assistant director of engineering and at the water supply at our water resources. I want to thank Joe Sheerhouse and our entire intergovernmental team, who was up in Atlanta a lot, making sure that these funds, that we were making our case to the state, and which we did. So thank you very much, and thank you for allowing me to talk about that.
Thank you so much, city manager.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Blake.
I do have a question for our city manager.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, with this whole project, what is the D.V.E. percentage participation?
So I believe that it's.
Has it even been established yet?
So we have, you'll remember that city council gave me the authority to enter into the pre-construction phase of a C.M.A.R., construction manager-at-risk contract, several months ago. I believe that was, we were still in the school board building. I will be coming to council as soon as possible with the next phase of that C.M.A.R., and it will have D.V.E. requirements, and I can't recall off the top of my head what they are. And I can't, if you want to speak it out loud, Ron, that'd be great.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, Ron Felden, chief of water resources. I just came from a meeting at I.N.D., and we're talking about this exact issue. We have our first package of about eighty million dollars worth of guaranteed maximum price proposal from the contractor, and as of today, we have fifteen percent identified for D.V.E. participation that I said was a great start, and I'd like to get a little bit more.
That's not a great, no, that's not a great start.
We're not coming until November, so we're only here in September. But we are going to develop a D.V.E. plan, and in that D.V.E. plan, we're not only going to show what is going to be identified for the initial package in November, but also for the remainder of the first phase of the project, which will be into early next year. So what you'll see is the first package and what the breakdown is, and then you'll see the future packages into early next year that are going to have the projected D.V.E. participation with the goal of twenty-five percent in total for the entire package.
So, Mr. City Manager?
Alderman Blake? And I'll call you next, Alderman Bell.
I would also like to see that percentage increase, Mr. City Manager, and I would also like to see local participation in subcontracting if, well, I'm not going to say if allowable, it just needs to happen.
So if I could just speak a little bit about, we're using, we understand council's priority around local and D.V.E. participation, and we are going to work tirelessly to do all that we can to increase participation for local and minority-owned businesses and local minority-owned businesses. I want to be clear that many of the funds that we're using for this project come from the state and have state strings, and we have to follow state procurement laws as it relates to that. The same would be true for any federal dollars that would be blended into this project that we have. We also have to follow federal procurement laws as it relates to that as well. So we can obviously make council aware of all of those requirements while still pushing towards the highest degree of local and D.V.E. participation that we can in every contract, and especially our very large contracts.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
What is the state law as far as D.V.E. participation?
I will.
I do believe it's more than fifteen percent.
No, ma'am, it has different, it has different requirements for different types
I would like for you to give me the information.
Of work, but I can absolutely follow up, and I know that we'll be doing a council workshop soon on.
Yes.
Construction manager-at-risk projects and how our local and D.V.E. program goals work into those contracts as well.
Alderman Bell?
That's what I was going to speak to, because the city. You through?
I'm done, thank you.
I did ask the city manager to do a workshop for the council on C.M.A.R. and the D.V.E. and minority participation and local participation, all of that, before we approve Phase Two.
I would like to thank you all so much, and we're getting ready to move off this item, but I would need to state that our, the city of Savannah's disadvantaged business enterprise, our local minority business enterprise, and our SBO, our Savannah Business Ordinance, enterprise, our local minority business enterprise, and our SBO, our Savannah Business Ordinance that I fashioned some years ago and put in place, I just want to remind everyone that those percentages, those ordinances, those laws have not moved, have not changed at all. In some cases, as the City Manager has stated, the city of Savannah, with the aggressiveness that I kept my hands on the plow with this, that some of the percentages are in reference to the state requirements and federal government requirements, the city of Savannah, in certain instances, we exceed those percentages. But I understand the questioning from my Council colleagues in reference to our percentages, but I just wanted to remind, because sometime we do forget, on the wonderful work in reference to the city of Savannah, as it has been working extremely hard through our procurement, through the City Manager, and our procurement offices in reference to having our percentages, you know, over 18%, some cases in some contracts, we are 25%, some cases, we are 28% participation with DBE and our local minority businesses. So, I just wanted to remind the public of that. Thank you so much. So, we are going to, have I carried that already? All right, we're going to move on. Thank you so much, Mr. Feldner, thank you, City Manager. Alderman Palumbo, items number 22 through 24, please. The items number 22, you got to read the items, sir.
That's right. [inaudible] 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 With a statement, please.
You can go ahead.
Mr. City Manager and Council, I believe there was some questions about, this comes on the hill about work. This comes on the hill, the information that number 22, 23, and 24, there was much discussion about what we were doing about labor force in our community, and how awesome is that to acknowledge that we've put in all this money in a discussion that some of us didn't know about. Appreciate that, thank you for the job that you do.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And just a note for some of your microphones, only so many microphones can be on at one time, so if you're not speaking, please turn your microphone off so that we can have others. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. The items number 22, 23, and 24 has been read and moved. I would like to make a, like to, it's been properly moved and seconded, that items number 22, 23, and 24 has been seconded, all in favor by indicating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number, items number 25, authorize the approval of the naming and renaming of public property facilities and streets petition to designate the East Savannah Neighborhood Historic Markers Project in Aldermanic District Three, Alderwoman Wilder Bryant.
Mr. City Manager, I'd like to know if there are any residents from East Savannah here? I just want to say, it took over four years to do this. I want to thank Ms. Liddy and Ms. Demazio. It's a wonderful thing when you can acknowledge your community and the things that happen, and so we're going to acknowledge East Savannah Neighborhood, we're going to acknowledge that the Sports Arena, and if you don't remember, the Sports Arena, James Brown and Elvis Presley were there. It is now the Savannah Gardens. We want to acknowledge the East Savannah Cemetery. We walked there, they have members of that community as far back as 1870. We want to acknowledge the First African Baptist Church of East Savannah and the other churches in that community, and we also want to acknowledge the business community where I attended 4H and Girl Scout, we had Boy Scout meetings there. Ms. Eva Mutry and Ms. Palmer want to acknowledge the first business on that corner, we called her Ms. Sweet P, it was a corner store. And so, I want to authorize the installation and approval of East Savannah Neighborhood Historical Markers in Aldermanic District Three.
Second motion. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number 26, authorize the approval of the naming and renaming of public property facilities and streets petition to name the basketball court in Crawford Square to honor Larry Gator Rivers in Aldermanic District Two, Alderman Leggett.
Nope, that's me again. We on a roll here in the Third District.
All right, Third District.
Right, yeah.
Alderwoman...
His wife is here, would you stand, please, and would you like to come to the podium with anybody who came with you? Can they come to the podium, please? Joe, I want to thank Luciana and Joe Sheerouse for making this happen. Larry Gator Rivers was a personal friend of mine since the age of 10. He bounced basketballs all over the United States and out of this country. It is a pleasure and an honor to acknowledge everything that he's done. You can come up to the podium, too, please, right? And I just want to say, in keeping with all the things when we come up here, we've acknowledged Lieutenant John White, the first African-American in the state of Georgia, to be a sworn officer, Robbie Robinson, who was a council member and a personal friend, Mr. Stubber from Magnolia Park, Freddie Patrick, who was a personal friend, Scollo has a basketball court named in him, Roscoe Scollo Edwards. We have now, Joe Sheerouse is making, working on something for James Holmes and Mickey Stevens. We continue to give people their flowers. Unfortunately, some of them won't be able to do that, but that is what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be acknowledging the people that we stood on shoulders, that make our heroes in this community known. Now, some people are talking about the history. I cannot be concerned about history. We're here in this council trying to make history and moving forward. It is such a great honor, my friend, right? And Joe and Luciana, I say that all the time, and everybody up here should be acknowledging people in their districts, what they've done, and so. Long time coming.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something, Jean, please? Hold on, I got to put this on the camera, girl.
Thank you so very much to everybody that has seen that this come to fruition. You know, a long, long time ago, when I was in school at West Broad Street Elementary School, a lot of people probably don't know that school. We went to that school before we went to the Board of Education on Bull Street, then we got a school called Butler Elementary School. So, we have been schooled a long time about a lot of things. However, our history does not stop. Our history go on. History will repeat itself, history has repeated itself, and today, I thank you, Savannah City Council, for sewing up a little piece of Savannah's dress that had a hole in it by giving my husband this honor. Thank you.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Yes, I want to thank everybody who made this possible because when you, when our kids go on that square, they'll see Gator Rivers' name on there, and that's going to mean so much in terms of work ethic, because Gator Rivers worked on his craft for a long time, and if you ask him, he would tell you he was the best ball handler in the world. He would say that, and he, not only is he making history now, Gator Rivers made history in 1967. Gator Rivers was a part of the 1967 Beach High Bulldogs team that won the first state tournament, the first black school to win a state tournament in the state of Georgia. Before 1967, we could not participate in Georgia High School Association. So, he was a part of that. So, that was history back, and not only that, the year after 1967, just to show you how much talent that Savannah has, Beach played Johnson High School in 1968 and won the second state championship. So, Gator Rivers, his work ethic is impeccable. He played for the Glow Trotters and coached the Glow Trotters, and I've been knowing him since I was seven, and he is the best ball handler in the world. And thank, I want to thank everybody for allowing this to happen for our children, so they'll see, so they'll be able to see Gator Rivers' name down there, and they'll see work ethic. So, thanks a lot.
What is your, give us your name, too.
My name is Lawrence Bryan III, and I'm the president of the OB3 Foundation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Give us your name, too.
I'm Michael Mays, I'm a recent resident of Savannah. My father has some historical significance in sports as well, so...
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, yeah, Gators, he's one of the, one of the most important people in sports that was, he's why we moved here, and, yeah, on behalf of Jean, I really want to thank you guys for taking care of him. Long overdue, but right on time.
Mrs. Rivers, would you say your name into the mic?
My name is Jean Rivers.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good to see you, too. Good to see you.
Yeah, former commissioner.
Former commissioner.
So, you know, we shouldn't be, we should be concerned about our history, but it is our concern to make history, and so I'm going to start naming lanes and buildings and sidewalks, anything that we can put a name on somebody who were really icons and did some things in this community. We keep worrying about the past that we cannot change, and so we're making history here all day, every day. So, I would like to authorize the approval of naming and renaming public property facilities and street petition to name the basketball court in Crawford Square to honor Larry Gator Rivers in Aldermanic District Two, Detroit. Thank you for partnering with me on that.
It's been properly moved and seconded for item number 26. All in favor by indicating aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain. I'm abstaining. Thank you.
All in favor by saying aye, we have how many ayes? One, two, three, four, five, six, and two abstentions?
Yes. We're still making history, God bless everybody. Thank you.
All right. Item number 27.
Madam Mayor Protim.
Yes, sir.
Regarding item number 27, I move for the approval of the, to authorize the city manager to approve a major subdivision Meadow Lakes Phase Two.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded for item number 27. All in favor by indicating aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 28.
Madam Protim, I authorize the city manager to approve a major subdivision Brookline Phase Five.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for item number 28. All in favor by indicating aye?
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion passes. Well, Savannah, Savannah City Council, Mr. City Manager, and everybody, I'm looking at the clock. I kind of went over just a little bit of my time, but we're at the end of our agenda.
Yes. I always have announcements.
Do we have any announcements from our city council? Alderman Protim.
All right, yes, October 7th, we've got the month of October coming up. October 7th is Wilshire Area Neighborhood Association's National Night Out from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Elks Lodge. October 8th, I'll be hosting a town hall meeting at the new Windsor Forest High School Auditorium. I got to remember what time it is, we'll send it out, 6:00, Lita's telling me 6:00. So, 6:00 o'clock, 6:00 on the 8th of October at the new Windsor Forest High School Auditorium, so we're excited there. And then Rock the Block is coming back out to the 6th, the first weekend and the second weekend of October, so it'll be Coffee Bluff and Windsor Forest, so that's it.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Hey, Third District, always have announcements. Go Pink 360 starts in October. We're doing free mammograms with the Second District. It's on Tuesday, September 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Come get a free mammogram. We got to make sure that we take care of people that we love and remind them, and especially men. On September 30th, that whole day, let's go. Mr. Denny, we're doing a brainstorm solutions for the elderly in our community. We're talking about utility bills, we're talking about that gap that doesn't always reach them, and we're talking about doing everything that we can to change the quality of life, and we're doing that in the Third District also on the 3rd, as we continue to be the voice of the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Alderwoman Bell.
Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Yes.
I would like to thank Mayor Protim Shabazz and Alderwoman Miller Blakely for attending, and the city manager and his staff, for attending a breakfast on Tuesday, September 16th, for the faith leaders in this community, and we are very proud to say that they unanimously decided, at our urging, to conduct efforts for the remainder of this year and for '26 to help support the city's work with the homeless population. So, thank you, Alderwoman...
Name the mission.
Hmm?
Name the homeless shelter.
Oh, she told me this, oh, and our proceeds from this initiative, the capital campaign and the collaboration among the churches will benefit the Inner City Night Shelter under the direction of Director Yvonne Pryor. So, thank you all for supporting that, I appreciate that because I did lead that effort, so thank you. Also, she would not be happy to go home if we don't announce that Alderwoman Miller Blakely is celebrating another birthday, she's proud to tell that, y'all.
65 years old.
Tomorrow is it?
Tomorrow, yes.
Happy birthday.
I have an announcement. The Hungry Club Forum, October 4th at 7:00 p.m., will be doing their award gala at the Vintage, and we ask that you all please purchase tickets and come to that event. It is going to be phenomenal, and I will be one of the honorees, so I invite you all to please come and participate.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Alderman Palumbo.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Just wanted to commend our municipal archives team and all residents of the 4th District who came out for our District Four Community Archiving Event, it was a big success, but don't make it a moment, make it a movement. If you have your historic materials, it's not too late. Operators are standing by, you can reach out to us anytime at AldermanPalumbo@savannahga.gov.
Good commercial.
Mayor, I forgot to congratulate the city staff.
Alderwoman Wilder, Brian.
912, 1912, great job for everybody, all departments, we had a ball, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have one.
Alderwoman Liddy.
Saturday, October 4th, the first Saturday, West Savannah Community Market at Bay and Brittany, 92.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right.
I forgot about this, sorry.
Like the mayor would say, y'all, you know, we can leave out of here.
This is it, real quick, just kudos to Alderman Nick Palumbo, he received Justice Unites Savannah Together, Just inaugural Community Advocate Award, so congratulations.
Congratulations. Mayor Protim. Yes, ma'am, Alderwoman Blakely.
One more thing, I got to say, happy birthday to my brother, his birthday is today, and mine is tomorrow, and Dominic Miller, and my sister just had her second great-grandbaby on yesterday. Oh, and happy birthday to my granddaughter Akira Mack, whose birthday was yesterday as well, so, 36.
All right, very good. All right, anybody else? Nobody else? Thank y'all so much for being here. Meeting is adjourned.